Okay, Mayor, we're ready to get going whenever you are.
Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order for February 25th, 2025. If everybody could please join me in Spanish, thank you. We're going to hear from our Spanish interpretation information.
Thank you. Good evening. We're offering live interpretation in Spanish during this meeting. If you wish to hear Spanish interpretation, please click Interpretation button at the bottom right side of your Zoom screen. You will see a globe icon. If you're joining via the Zoom smartphone app, select Language by clicking More, or in the three dots at the bottom right corner of your screen, select Language Interpretation and choose Spanish and click Done. If you wish to hear only interpreters and not original speakers, be sure to click mute original audio. Buenas noches. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en vivo en español durante esta reunión. Si desea escuchar la interpretación en español, haga clic en el botón Interpretación, que significa interpretación, en la parte inferior derecha de la pantalla Zoom, y asimismo verá un icono de globo terráqueo o globo mundial. Si se está uniendo a través de la aplicación Zoom para smartphone, teléfono inteligente, seleccione su idioma siendo clic en More, que significa más o los tres puntos en la esquina inferior derecha de la pantalla. Seleccione Language Interpretation, interpretación del idioma. Después, si elija Spanish, haga clic en Done, que significa listo. Si desea escuchar solo a los interpretes y no a los oradores originales, asegúrese de hacer clic en mute original audio, que es silenciar audio original. Thank you, and I pass it back to the council.
Thank you very much. Our land acknowledgement. The city of South Lake Tahoe acknowledges the lands we occupy today are the lands and the home of the Washi'wshu, the people from here known today as the Washu tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation. Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washu lived here and cared for this place with values and intention that we can all learn from. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to acknowledge, thank, and honor the indigenous Washu tribal communities that are the past, present, and future stewards of the Lake Tahoe Basin. Now, if everybody could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Here.
Councilmember Robbins?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass?
Here.
Mayor Wallace?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have a closed session report? No, there's no report tonight, Madam. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to announce that we will be at the request of the City Manager and City Attorney pooling item number 11 for a future council meeting, and we'll bring it back when that item is fully ready. Moving on, we'll go to Public Communications. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any topic not listed on this agenda. Comment shall be limited to four minutes. In accordance with the Brown Act, the City Council cannot deliberate or vote on any matter raised under the public communications, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Mr. Wallace?
Dwayne Wallace, CEO of South Tahoe Chamber of Commerce, Madam Mayor, City Council. I just came to announce, to make sure that, so that those who are watching will know, the fire forum that was, that Councilmember Jenkins and members of the public had, have been asking about when it comes to evacuation and fire preparedness with the two chambers is going to be on Thursday, April 17th, at 6:00 PM at the High School Theater. So there's plenty of parking. It's a great spot to be able to televise this, or at least get it on as many channels and YouTube's and whatever that we can. As I heard the person speaking in Spanish, it occurred to me, and I'm going to try to see if there's somebody who can maybe do something in Spanish as well. So we'll work on that. And Chief Drennan is really coordinating a lot of this, so it's, it's a lot of what I think the council was looking for, that we'll, we'll get as much done as we can. We've, we've, from the former town hall meetings that we had on Measure N, we sort of have a, an idea of how to work together. Steve DeCher and Kristy Kriegen have been terrific, the other chamber. So it's nice to see the two chambers working together, and it's nice to be able to do something that the council needs and wants and our citizens want. So thank you for the opportunity, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there any other member? Mr. Mosher.
Is that supposed to be filled with candy?
So that people don't touch the microphone, Mr. Mosher. It's actually the flower from Beauty and the Beast.
I don't, I don't know whose idea was to put a microphone in the middle of this anyway. Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Yeah. Concerning the Tahoe Daily Tribune, I mean, they don't seem to have a word limit on letters to the editor or opinion columns, you know, such as yours, Ms. Wallace, Mayor Wallace, or, or Dwayne Wallace, or several other people that have contributed over time. But, you know, they had zero words on the Jackson family lawsuit that was announced at the meeting here by our city attorney concerning a decision at, in closed session a while back, you know, four and a half million dollar settlement. And when I asked him sometime later, kept waiting and waiting, South Tahoe Now had it the next morning, or I think even later, later that night posted. And, you know, they, after the third request to Tulany Griffey, Griffo, at the Tribune, I finally got a response, and it said, I guess we missed it. So I don't know how they missed it. But anyway, they also managed to miss the arrest of Brandy Bannister, who was a school board member at the time, for DUI, twice over the limit, and was arrested for that in child endangerment, and charges, I believe, were later lowered. But anyway, like I said, part of the problem here, and one of the biggest problems, is, you know, lack of, lack of coverage, lack of transparency, and, you know, by our news media. And so I would suggest that the city manager, you have somebody, either city manager does it, or somebody, do press releases to the papers. That occurs in a number of cities and places all around the world. So just do press releases, and especially on important items, to make sure that our papers and news outlets do get, do get the message. And then they have no excuses for not printing it or, or saying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Mr. Lowberg?
Scott Lowberg? Hi. It's disappointing when you put out the word that you want participation, and that yet the public comment period is cut down. That, that doesn't wash, based on some future perception that in some remote area, it's been abused. That hasn't been the case here. It's disappointing that it was reduced unanimously, no less. But anyhow, the other thing is the blight continues. Nothing seems to be done about the blight. I mean, the Motel 6, while that was painted, but in this meeting, in one of these meetings, it was said that they were going to be putting the screens up on the fence. Nothing, nothing was done. There's fence after fence after fence, and no screening. And then they're up there for extended period of time. The tire store, that project, they did put the fencing up, but I had to, I had to send emails because it blocked the intersection. You couldn't see around it. It was a blind curve. It didn't get addressed. But it's just light, block after block after block. What's the point of having a town, you know, town plans and dividing it up into separate areas if you're going to allow a group like the Conservancy to just come in and take the Motel 6 out of production? Losing the property tax, the revenue, a place for people of lower income to come here. They don't have a place then. You might as well put a sign that says, keep the heck out of here. It's despicable that that would be done. You know, it should at least have been converted to housing. And I don't believe that there's any asbestos problem. Maybe at the pool, there's asbestos, but stuff can be done to mitigate that inexpensively. The other blight is on Blue Bejo and Highway 50. There's two giant white shipping containers behind a business there, and they're probably too close to the back doors for fire code, but it's just more continued blight. These two giant white shipping containers right there, right up against the sidewalk and against the building. It's just despicable, all this blight. Something has to be done about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowberg. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we have a couple of hand raised. First, we have Ms. O'Hare.
Hi. My name's Kelly O'Hare. I live on, up in Heavenly area. Last meeting, we had a presentation on safety, traffic safety and accidents involving the area. And Mayor, you asked me if I could put that on a map. I looked, or some of the problem areas on a map. I couldn't find a map that actually had the street names and covered the area, so I thought I would just speak to it right now, because I can describe it pretty well, and it would create a record someone could go back and look at. For as long as I've been coming here, which would go back to the 80s, this Keller Road has had the same traffic issues. Back in the 1980s, a friend of mine slipped in his ski boots on Keller Road, slipped down the hill, and a truck behind him also slipped and almost ran him over. And so since way back then, I've been really acutely aware of the problems in the area. And then I've lived here for a really long time. There are three major areas where the water clogs up and freezes over and covers about half the roadway. The most concerning area is at Crest, where Crest hits Keller Road. There's actually a drain on Crest. It gets clogged, and then the water comes and flows over the roadway. The other is at the top of Keller, where it's parallel to World Cup, and it's before it turns left and goes sort of uphill. There's also a drain there. It fills with pine cones and clogs up, and the water comes down and ices up. And then the last is at Keller and Bridle. I've seen other things there. I've seen a big trailer fall off, a flatbed truck slide down the hill into the power pole and knock the power out. All of those, most of those collisions I've seen were not reported to law enforcement, but all of them involved people from out of the area, primarily, I think, because the folks who live there know to go around, go around these problems. But it occurred to me, if the city is able to chop up that ice, it would sure help the situation. And then there's this one other small issue. For at least 10 years, we've been asking for a sign on Saddle in front of the timeshare that says that it's, that it's not a through street, because tourists drive up there in heavy snow, and the street isn't plowed. And I'm glad to hear it's going to be plowed regularly, because it has not been in the past. Sometimes we can go three days without a snowplow. So the tourists are, even if you drive in all-wheel-drive car up that street, you can't get out. You get, you get, they can get stuck. I have a hire truck with full chains, snow tires and four-wheel drive, and sometimes I can't get out. Most of the time I can, but I bought the truck specifically for the street. So in the past, it occurred to me, we were going to the wrong place. For 10-plus years, we've been asking the police chiefs, various police chiefs, for a sign. My neighbors down the street really tried hard to get that. It just never happened, and maybe we were going the wrong place. So the sign would help people, people from getting trapped. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Ms. Ballard.
Hi, everyone. This is Stacy Ballard. I want to address the speaker who spoke at last month's City Council meeting, Deepak Sharma. He said that his family owns the largest number of tourist accommodations in the basin, and then went on to call our town, city council, and commissions communists. This was really disturbing to me. As a low-income resident for 30 years, I have, I have served on multiple commissions over the years, and I strongly disagree with his assertion about our community. Our commissions operate democratically, and every decision is voted on. Sharma also labeled some of our recent measures as communist, but they were anything but. Measure T in 2017 was voted on and passed. Measure N was voted on and failed. That's democracy. Just because you don't like the outcome of a vote doesn't mean the process or the people involved are communists. Ironically, the fact that Sharma could, was able to stand before the City Council and make such claims proves that we live in a democracy. You certainly couldn't do that in Russia. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Next up, we have Ms. Reagan.
Good evening, everybody. This is Angie Reagan from Access Tahoe. I'm just here to request an update on the city's efforts to improve access, services, safety, and inclusion for our vulnerable populations, including seniors, individuals with disabilities of all kinds, including those struggling with mental health. We are hoping for an update on what progress has been made or is planned for key areas, including, one, infrastructure and accessibility, updates on the ADA transition plan, accessibility of the playgrounds, skate parks, beaches, trails, ice skating rink, and plans for the new rec center. Two, services and programming, what activities, art, music, exercise offerings, resources, and support systems are in place or being developed for seniors and people with disabilities, including mental health and recovery resources. Three, staff training and community outreach, how is the city ensuring staff are trained to support and serve these communities with empathy and awareness? Four, web and digital accessibility, is the city improving the website and digital communication to be more accessible for all residents and visitors? South Lake Tahoe has the opportunity to be a leader in inclusion, and I urge the city to prioritize these efforts. Let's ensure that every resident and visitor, regardless of age or ability, feels welcome and supported in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reagan. Next up, we have Melissa Soderstone.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here again asking for our mayor to please make a statement in support of her community or to resign from her position in the council and her many other positions that she's on. For the last several weeks, we have watched our rights and values be systematically stripped away from us. Inflation and costs are rising, and hate continues to grow exponentially across the country. Bird flu is growing. Food and gas prices are rising. Staffing cuts that will surely affect our local workforce. Immigrants, the differently abled minorities in our LGBTQ communities are watching their hard-earned dignity and constitutional rights be obliterated. Both Ukraine and Palestine are being treated as mere commodities and real estate. And yet you remain silent. You may not believe this to be your problem. However, you seem to have had plenty to say on numerous occasions when you took issue with something. Rainbow crosswalks, cannabis, multiple housing measures, fellow council members who talk longer about progressive issues than you find necessary. You found ample time to speak out or write negative opinions in the paper regarding those issues. And elected officials across the country are speaking out, many of them conservative Republicans. Yet although you demanded to be mayor because somehow you were more fit to speak without personal agenda for our community on important issues, when we need your voice, it is silent. It seems clear to me by your continued silence that you welcomed much of this cruel and ignorant policy. I will assume also that the rumors of you moderating on a local Patriots page are true. Your support of this MAGA cult are clear indication that you are unable to objectively respond to our community under the circumstances. I believe that these views are a direct conflict of interest for our well-being in every decision you have made previously and will make going forward. I believe you have no right to make any decision in this community, as you cannot safely and fairly represent the populations that you so clearly look down upon. You claim to be a Christian, yet show little compassion today. A true Christian would humble herself, renounce all hatred, and dedicate further actions towards goodwill. Do the right thing and stand now in solidarity with your community instead of your king or step down.
Okay, I guess that was it. All right, that's it for public comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Just a few quick statements. Mr. Najad did diligently write down all of the locations that Ms. O'Hare presented. With regards to the screening on the fences, especially at the Motel 6, we attempted to put that up, and it kept knocking the fences over because of the wind that we've had this year. So they're dealing with it in another way, and that's probably why some of the other locations don't have screening as well, because it makes temporary fencing unstable. And Ms. Reagan, I would suggest that you contact the city manager, and he can update you on all of those things. And if you don't already have his contact information, I will be happy to send it to you. Okay, moving on to city commission reports. Are there any city commissioners in the room? Mr. Hamilton, representing the ACT Commission.
Yes, I am. David Hamilton, ACT Commission, Mayor Wallace, and council members. A few meetings ago, Councilmember Robbins had indicated that he'd like to hear more from some of the commissions, and I thought, well, shoot, we can do that. So hopefully, we'll give you some more regular reports on what's going on with the ACT Commission. I just wanted to come in today and update you on a couple of things. We have the call for exhibition for the art out here in the lobby, has been out for a while. It closes on the 10th of March, and we'll be moving forward with recommending somebody from that. Heard from John Stark that we've got some good interest in that, so that's great. The second thing is, we are going to get started on, we're reviewing the process and procedures we had for the mini-grants for last year to develop the mini-grants for this year, and hope to move forward establishing a timeline and get those underway so that we can get them going June, July, July, so that people have time to, if they're doing outdoor things, to have time to do that. And we are also, again, staff is moving forward with Terry Bennett and the sculpture that'll be coming up this spring/summer that we did with the ARPA funding. So those are some of the things we're up to. And again, hopefully, we'll be a regular presence here, so if you have any questions or any direction for us, we'd be happy to go.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Hamilton? Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very, the disembodied voice here on the, on the, in the room. Thank you very much for, for coming and giving us an update. I appreciate that.
Oh, certainly. We'll try to make a, anything, anything going on, we'll try to make it a regular point to be here after our meeting, so you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any other city commissioners in the room that would like to give a report? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our consent agenda. Council, do you have anything that you would like pulled? Mr. Robbins?
No.
Okay, thank you. Staff, is there anything additional? Okay. Okay, you have a question on number five? Go ahead and ask your question, Mr. Jenkins. Do you want to report, or do you just have a question?
Yeah, I just, I had to ask. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to listen to my wife about being a little quieter when I talk, so I'm trying to make everyone else who has to listen to me. I, I wanted some reassurance that in revisions to the compensation benefit package, that this is, this is not a new compensation plan, but rather it is some procedural error that CalPERS, for some reason, has put their nose into our labor relations business. And may I assume that that is the case? And if so, then I have no objection.
Your assessment is fair.
Okay.
There's no new cost, and CalPERS does audit periodically, and we're complying with that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Seeing nothing else, we'll move to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to make a comment on items one through eight, the consent agenda? Mr. Messina?
By the way, it would help if those said above it consent agenda, because it looks like it's just part of the regular agenda, the way it's written. Now, John Messina speaking for myself on item, I think it's three, item four. Combining these two into one item is kind of a problem, because they're both major issues. The one that bothers me the most is the package for the Farmer Women's Center, which is now politically correct named as the...
Mr. Messina, I'm sorry for interrupting. Those items are under regular unfinished business.
They are under, well, where's, okay, the consent agenda wasn't on my agenda then.
It's items one through eight is the consent agenda.
Well, that is items, four would be one through eight.
The domestic violence grants?
Yes.
Funds? Okay.
Anyway.
Sorry.
I support most of what they're doing at the Domestic Violence Center, except for one thing, and that is these, I noticed they got a quota here for 50 referrals from the city police department, et cetera. And there has been a huge increase in restraining orders against men. And it seems to be coming out of this cooperative effort between the Live Violence Free and the Police Department. I know of two guys who've had restraining orders unfairly processed against them, and this is very unfair, because I support the original intent of protecting women from violence. You know, I'm all for that. But I'm repeatedly seeing a miscarriage of justice after another, because current laws allow these rules to let women weaponize this against men. These restraining orders are issued without any proof at all to sustain the accusations against them, and yet this creates a permanent record on the man's background checks that he's been charged with violence against women. There needs to be something done, either reviewing the process or the services that are doing it, to screen out these kind of unfounded accusations against men. It's, it's not right, and we're paying for it. We're subsidizing, you're actually rewarding the center for issuing more and more restraining orders, which gives them a greater and greater incentive to file unsubstantiated reports against men. And I'd like to know how many they filed against women, because I know they filed over 100 against men. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment on items one through eight?
Yes, Scott Lowberg. I echo his comments. As a victim of that misplaced and, you know, illegitimate restraining order, and having to spend $25,000 to clear my name, it's despicable, the way they can get away with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowberg. Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak on items one through eight? Okay, seeing none.
Mayor, is it possible that, I don't understand the process that she used. Is it possible that something that maybe the chief can explain what the process currently is for my education and maybe education of the public, how, what, what happens? I really don't know.
Chief Stevenson, would you, are you prepared to answer that?
You mean how restraining orders are obtained? Yeah, those are issued by the court. So you fill out a packet of paperwork, you say what happened, you turn it into the court. A judge reviews that, and he issues what's called a temporary restraining order. They call both halves back for a hearing to listen to evidence as to whether or not the order should be issued longer term. They listen to that, judges make that decision. It's not, not ours or the Violence Free.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Ms. Blankenship, is there anyone on our Zoom platform that would like to speak on...
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. I'll bring you back to council for further discussion or a motion.
I will put forward a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We can vote.
And I'll do a roll call vote, because Mr. Robbins is out of the room. Let's see. Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass?
Aye.
Mayor Wallace?
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
That motion unanimously carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, the 2024-2025 Master Fee Schedule. Ms. Nishimura?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Akemi Nishimura, accountant here in Finance Department. Before you today, the proposed updates to the 2024-25 Master Fee Schedule, user fees in California are required to conform to the California... in California are required to conform to the California Constitution, including Proposition 26 and statutory requirements, including Government Code of Sections 66014 through 66015.18.5. Under Proposition 26, certain user fees are excluded from the definition of tax, and the city is able to increase those fees without going to the borders. Those fees include user fees imposed to provide specific services or products, fees to cover reasonable regulatory costs for issuing licenses and permits, and entry fees and rental fees for the city property and facilities. User fees are important source of revenue for the city to reduce their reliance on general fund subsidies. Our comprehensive financial policies state, to the extent that user fees do not cover the entire cost of providing such services, the general fund subsidizes the additional expense. From the fee study conducted in 2015, it was recommended that the city move toward 100% cost recovery. In order to keep up with the increasing cost of providing those services, staff use the CPI as a guideline to update the master fee schedule every year. Staff's last CPI update was adopted on March 26, 2024, so we are back again this year to adjust the fee schedule for 2025. Consistent with the city council motion, on the February 19, 2019 meeting, staff used the San Francisco-Auckland-Hayward Urban Oil Items Index. The December, over December change in CPI was 2.38% for this year's schedule. The fee schedule in front of you shows existing fees, as well as the proposed fees, to be in effect upon adoption by city council. Fee increases or no increase is determined by each department based on their needs and comparison to the market value, and the areas where a fee is not increased by 2.38%, they are listed in the staff report. Some further consideration for fee changes as follows. Revenue derived from user fees shall not exceed the cost of providing the service. So if providing a service costs $50, we can charge up to $50 for this service, but no more. The method of collecting and assessing fees shall be as simple as possible. This is to reduce the administrative cost of collection. Fee levels shall be sensitive to the market for similar services. The cost of recovery shall consider community-wide benefits versus special benefits. The cost of recovery shall consider the final benefit to the user, and consideration shall be made for Prop 26 requirements. This concludes my presentations, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Nishimura. Is there any questions for Ms. Nishimura?
I have a question. Ms. Nishimura, first of all, let me say that I have the highest regard and respect for the Finance Department, and I have for a long time. You do a great job, all of you do. In regard to the fee, the fees, one, I don't know why we use the San Francisco Bay Area CPI, a major metropolitan area in comparison to where we are. That's my, and the other, I'm reluctant to approve any fee increases of any kind until we've had a budget review and we look more closely at our budget and what might be part of our strategic plan. I'm not saying that you have done, your staff, the staff has done anything wrong, but I'm not inclined to increase fees without, without a clear understand, because, and I'll try to be brief. What I heard on the camp, yeah, the question, the, well, questions and comments, I guess I could put a question mark at the end. I don't understand the CPI, and I don't understand why we're dealing with it now. That's not your problem, it's our problem, and I would hope that we defer discussions until we look at our budget, what our needs are, and evaluate what our fees are used for, rather than just simply raising fees because we're raising fees. So that's, that's my, that's my question, I guess, comment.
Ms. Chikromova, can you please speak to the, the one item of the index?
Why we're using index, I'll let Ms. Nishimura explain.
Okay.
So this is a recap of what we discussed during the February 2019 meetings, but, so the San Francisco-Auckland-Hayward Index has been used historically, and also, at that time, visitors from San Francisco Bay Area is a major, was a major driver for the economy and the cost for the city. So the staff decided that the San Francisco Index is, was appropriate to use at that time. One thing I'd like to point out is the consistency in terms of what rate to use. So the city council has option to adapt any index based on the appropriateness. However, once it is determined, staff's suggestion would be to use it at least five years for the consistency, as well as the transparency. So during the discussion, there was a mention that West Side Class BC Index might be more appropriate. This index is used for any urban area in the western regions, population under 2.5 million, which includes states such as Alaska, Hawaii, Oregon's, and Washington's. So I did look at the rates for the past five years, and what I found is, I guess because of the, my speculation is because this covers much larger area compared to the one specific area, such as San Francisco, the rate is less stable. So for example, 2024, the rate comparison is not different. The San Francisco area's rate is 2.38%, whereas the West Side Class BC is 2.26%. However, last year, the West Side Class BC is much higher than the San Francisco area index, and two years ago, it was almost 7%, whereas San Francisco area was 4%, 4.88%. So my recommendation would be, if we could use the San Francisco area rate, it will be less unstable, and because of the impact of the visitors to the city, might be more appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Chikromova. How long have we used this? I know that we codified it, or in a resolution, we did it in 2019, but how long have we used it?
Prior to that, I believe we used it for at least five years. I believe this rate, this CPI index, was also recommended by a consultant in 2015, when we did the user fee study last time, and I also would like to add that we just released an RFP that closed today. We will be doing another study, a citywide user fee study, and we will be also discussing more appropriate rates. When Ms. Nishimura and I looked at the available rates, there is no CPI available for each area. San Francisco-Auckland is the closest to us, other CPIs are for Los Angeles area, Riverside area, and those probably would not be applicable to the city in terms of the cost. And again, western CPI index covers broad area that is...
More unstable.
More unstable, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robbins, do you have any questions for Ms. Nishimura?
Yes, just briefly. I have no particular objection to the use of the San Francisco CPI, I'm simply curious. You know, this is a thing that's sort of worth taking another look at on a long-term periodic basis. You know, the challenge that we have here is that we're not, we're not just a generic small town under 50,000 people, we're a tourist town that has extremely high housing cost inflation, for example. I'm wondering if, and this is a long shot, if there is an index for, like a COLA index or, or something similar for tourist-heavy, tourist-oriented communities, rather than sort of western area states overall, which includes a lot of non-tourist, you know, area. But is there, if there's an index for something along the lines of tourist, you know, tourist communities? And I guess the, that's the question, and I guess the question to the council would be, do we want to maybe ask staff to take another look at this, at are we using the best and most appropriate index? That might be more of a strategic plan thing that we look at and make that a, an item for staff to look into at a, at a scheduled point that's useful for them, but my immediate term question is, are we aware of any index that might potentially be more appropriate? That might be something along the lines of a tourist-oriented community index? I'm suspecting not, but I wouldn't know.
Councilmember Robbins, this is City Manager Irvin. Having worked in four tourist communities, I've never seen a specific index for tourist-dependent communities. They typically do look to the largest urban area that's in the proximity to that remote jurisdiction. Thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've looked, I've looked through some of those indexes too, and I didn't see anything, but I just didn't want to be, I wanted to see if anyone else has given that some thought, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Ms. Chikromova, you said that we would be doing another fee schedule or...
User fee study in the next six months.
And at that, the last one, we also found, the recommendation from the consultant was to use this one. Is that part of the plan, is to ask them about if we're still accurately using...
If it's applicable, yes.
Okay.
It is our plan to review all CPI, available CPI indexes, but we reviewed the list thoroughly today, and we found, again, there is only a few CPI indexes that are available for California cities, and using it for other states probably would not be appropriate, since we have very specific economic environment in California. Again, western, Los Angeles, Riverside are the only few CPI indexes that are available, and San Francisco is closest to us, but we will be reviewing the index and the usage in the upcoming months. Also, I would like to add that not always all fees are in, in the master fee schedules are increased. It's up to city council to review and discuss and recommend to staff and city manager which fees possibly council, council would like to select or avoid the increases. And staff also reviews the fees, staff reviews increases, the cost, and often elects not to increase those fees, like for example, rentals at the airport, for rentals, for facility and property rentals, we select what market can bear, and if the fees are too high, and if we're losing tenants, obviously, it would not be staff's recommendation to increase those fees, which we did not in this master fee schedule.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any other questions? Mr. Bass?
Yeah, so it just came up, if we're going to be doing this user fee study, will that also kind of get into, just looking through a few of these things, like, for instance, I just saw a petty cab permit, which I thought it would always be cool to see if we got petty cabs here, even if we're doing events, but it's like 257 bucks. Is that precluding somebody from coming into town for a weekend if there's a festival and having a petty cab, because it's 257 bucks to register? And I think it's, it's good that we want to always be in cost recovery, but there's certain things, I think, too, that we don't always need to fully recover the cost, especially if it's impeding us being able to deliver a service. So will this user study that we're going, the fee study that we're going to do, kind of analyze some of that and look if we're, if we're kind of overshooting some of those fees compared to other locations or other municipalities?
We anticipate that consultant will analyze each and every fee on the master fee schedule. We will be developing the cost across the whole city for all departments and employees, the same as we did in 2015. It will be hourly rates of each employee's times, the time it takes to provide those services, like for example, issue permits and any auxiliary costs for possibly, and the consultant will be developing the full, what, they will be providing information on the full cost of providing each service, and city council will possibly elect, not possibly, but city council will provide directions on what recovery level we, the city, would like to see in the master fee schedule. As Ms. Nishimura stated, in 2015, city council directed staff to move towards 100% cost recovery. We're subsidizing a lot of kids' programs in the city, the kids' recreation programs in the cities significantly subsidized by general fund. However, all other services, like building permit fees, we are looking for a 100% cost recovery. But I want to also, would like to remind that based on the state rules and laws and Prop 26, cost of services cannot exceed, the cost cannot exceed the cost of services, or the fees cannot exceed the cost recovery.
Great, thank you. And then this is more, I think, for probably Chief Drennan. We have a charge on the EMS services, I know we talked about it maybe about a year ago, for the ambulance, and I'm wondering, did we look in if we can do what I think Lake Valley may do, where there's like local, or if it's not covered by insurance, there's a way to waive it? Have you, do you, do you recall what I was talking about? Yeah?
Councilmember Bass, on the fire department fees page in the master fee schedule, this is an outcome from the council discussion a few months back. There's an asterisk that talks about as, as it pertains to the advanced basic life support fee, I think that's what you're referring to. Gives the fire chief's office discretion to authorize or waive fees based on the following criteria. Patients relying on government-sponsored insurance plans such as Medicare, Medicaid, and Medi-Cal. Patients demonstrating a financial burden, such as those on a fixed income. And finally, patients who petition for a fee waiver or other circumstances may require, request a waiver with a final decision by the fire chief.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, you had another question?
Well, I actually have a comment. First, again, I want to say that I, I know that staff is acting as they were directed to do by the, by the city council in previous years. My concern, again, with the fees, is that when you look at our fees, over a Broadway, A, I don't understand them within the context of our budget, and B, that we are at a competitive disadvantage with our neighboring communities for investment, and our, and I believe, the, I mean, the question comments, this is what this is about, is that our fee, the fees, TRPA's fees, is driving investment out of town, rather than encouraging investment in town, which, and that's just my concern. I'd rather see this as part of a budget discussion about what our real needs are, what are our priorities, how are we spending our money? And so that's why I'm, I'm not going to support this, but other members of the council may.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Thank you, Ms. Nishimura. Go to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience? Mr.?
Mr. Robbins.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Robbins.
Had his hand raised. Do you still have a...
I apologize.
Question, Mr. Robbins?
Sure. I was just curious how many times the fees have been waived since the new fee waiver policy for the advanced life support fee. And it wasn't that important a question, but that was my question. I'm just curious if we have, if we have an idea of that offhand. If we don't know offhand, that's fine.
We don't, we don't have that specific number right now, but we can look into it, and if there's information to share, I'll send it to the whole council. Thank you, Councilmember Robbins.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Mr. Wallace?
Dwayne Wallace, Chamber of Commerce. From my, I think I was on the Utility District Board Finance Committee for 20 years, and one of the things we found is this fee makes a big difference throughout your organization. So if you pick somebody like San Francisco, where... where their economy is flailing and they're raising prices like crazy, what happens is just a point or two points that they are different than our basket of goods really causes a problem, because then everything you do with your unions and everything else is based on the assumption that you're like a city, that you're nothing alike. So, we found, over time, that our community, and it could be different now, because it's been a while since I've been there, we found that our community tracked really well with small west coast cities. And you're talking about Carmel, Catalina, Fort Bragg, places like that, that are tourist places, that are remote, and still have similar situations with how they get their goods. It made a lot of difference. It was a point or two sometimes. So, if you base it on San Francisco, my point is, I think you're getting it, is, is everything goes up in, in how you, how you charge people for things, whether it's airport hangars or for business licenses or any of those. And then my second point is with business licenses, it was always supposed to be what it costs to administer those licenses. And by raising some of the, it's already a done deal, but raising some of them to 10,000 or, or more dollars put a huge cut into some of our major businesses. So, and I think Mr. Bass was making the point that if you try to get it all on the front end instead of getting it on the tourist end where they spend more money and, and have a better experience and feel, don't feel like they're being set upon by wolves, you could actually, your economy grows a little better. So, I would hope as you go into your discussions that maybe you look at the small west coast cities, if that's even still an indicator, and, and keep in mind that you don't have to get all the money on the front end, that the backend works real well, too. Thank you.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? CNN, we'll move to Zoom.
We'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on this item. No additional public comments, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. For clarification, the west coast index has been either equal to or higher than ours over the last several years, is what Ms. Tchikomorova was saying. And the business license is a tax, and it went to the voters. So, it was not a city council-led, or city council voted on position. Is there any further discussion from council on this item? Mr. Robbins?
No questions. Ready to vote.
Okay, I will accept a motion.
Sure, I'll put forward a motion to directing staff to make changes, if any, to the 2024, 2025 master fee schedule for final adoption, March 25th of 2025.
Is your, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's the same one that's on here.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
But that's with no changes, correct? No. I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Blankenship, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Jenkins?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Moving on to regular unfinished business. Item number 10, Pay for Success agreements with Live Violence Free and the Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. Ms. Wackenhut-Lomelli.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Jessica Wackenhut-Lomelli, Housing Manager for the City of South Lake Tahoe. Today, I'm presenting the Pay for Success contracts with Live Violence Free, or LVF, and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, or TCH. On September 10th, 2024, city council was presented with the first annual report on homelessness. At this meeting, staff highlighted the financial concerns at LVF and TCH due to the precarity of grants and the lack of use for administration and staffing costs. This creates a gap in funding for the actual program implementation to get the grants and the real cost of operations. In addition, the majority of grants that are provided to these organizations at the state and federal levels are on reimbursement basis, which takes time and adds further financial deficits, especially for smaller nonprofits. On November 19th, 2024, city council was presented with a staff report on the Pay for Success model to help bridge the gap in funding for operational costs for these two local organizations. At this meeting, during the discussion, Councilmember Wallace brought up the need for a warm room, and this need was supported and echoed by all council members at that meeting. Councilmember Robbins made the motion directing staff to develop contracts with LVF and TCH based on the Pay for Success model, an amount not to exceed $40,000 for each agency. In addition to the motion, council directed staff to reach out to Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless to better understand the funding needed, the location, and any other pertinent information to investigate the equivalent of a warm room. This motion was seconded by Mayor Wallace. The warm room or emergency shelter will come back to city council on March 11th. Pay for Success is a model that advances solutions to nuanced issues, such as homelessness, while generating successful outcomes for families, individuals, and communities. The contracts are only paid if the interventions actually achieve the outcomes agreed upon in the contracts. The scope of services included in the agreement and the packet provided provide the full list of outcomes for each one of those nonprofits. Today's staff is recommending that city council approve the resolution authorizing a budget appropriation of $80,000 in general fund undesignated reserve for the Pay for Success agreements, and that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the Pay for Success agreements with Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, an amount not to exceed $40,000 for each agency until December 31st, 2025. Chelsea Thomas, Executive Director of Live Violence Free, is here today, and Kimberly Peterson, Executive Director of Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, is also available on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wackenhut-Lomelli. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Wackenhut-Lomelli? Mr. Robbins, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Move to public comment. Is there any member of the public in the room that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Messina?
Hi, Mr. Messina, speaking for myself. As far as rewarding the Coalition for the Homeless, I think you have to figure out a better definition of success in their agreement. This actually implies that they'd have to double the number of homeless people in South Lake Tahoe in order to get this $40,000 bonus. That is not, should not be our goal. It should be getting, or decreasing the number. And since, in the last five years, the number has doubled. We had about 100 people living on the streets before the formation of the homeless coalition. They now have 100 people housed, 100 people still living on the street, and that's $20 million later. Are, where are these other 100 people coming from? Other places. They're not our local people. We should have a system of helping the people that live here and find themselves homeless, not inviting people like my friend's brother that just came through here the other day from San Francisco, towing his little brand-new foldable wagon full of camping gear provided by other homeless organizations, and applying for housing here because he was tired of living in San Francisco. This is not the solution to homelessness in South Lake Tahoe. And rewarding them for failure is not, should not be our goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on this item? Ms. Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor Wallace, council members, and city staff. My name is Chelsea Thomas, and I'm the Executive Director of Live Violence Free. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in strong support of adopting the Pay for Success contracts with both Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. This initiative is a crucial step in addressing the complex and interconnected challenges of homelessness, intimate partner violence, and housing instability in South Lake Tahoe. Domestic violence remains one of the leading causes of homelessness, and without stable housing, survivors are often faced to choose between staying in an unsafe situation or becoming unhoused. Live Violence Free provides comprehensive support to all survivors, offering safe housing, crisis intervention, therapy, and advocacy that are otherwise not available to them. In the past year alone, Live Violence Free has provided over 2,000 bed nights of shelter and supported 89 clients through emergency, safe shelter, transitional housing, and housing-first programs. We work closely with city departments, including police, fire, and housing divisions, demonstrating the direct intersection of violence, homelessness, and public services. When survivors do not have a place to go, the ripple effects extend beyond the individual. It impacts families, workplaces, schools, and the entire community. Without this investment, survivors and families will face devastating consequences, and city services may bear the financial burden. When people experiencing homelessness do not have access to shelter and supportive services, they rely more on emergency responders, law enforcement, and healthcare systems, resulting in significantly higher costs for the city. By funding these contracts, the city is choosing a proven, cost-effective strategy that reduces long-term financial strain while prioritizing public safety and well-being. Homelessness is a complex issue that no single organization or city department can solve alone. Collaboration between agencies like Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless is essential because we address deeply connected needs. Survivors often require legal assistance, counseling, and safety planning in addition to housing support. By working together, we ensure that people do not just find housing, but a long-term path to safety and independence. This in turn builds a stronger, safer community for all. The Pay for Success model ensures that every dollar invested leads to measurable outcomes, helping individuals secure and retain housing while reducing the strain on city resources. Thank you for your time and commitment to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll move to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on Agenda Item 10. No public comments, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Bring it back to council for question, or discussion. Mr. Jenkins?
I, my, my wife and I are supporters of Live Violence Free. We think it's a great organization. It does a great job. What my concern has been, and I expressed to City Manager, is that we have many needs as a city, and general funds become the means of achieving those that are, with funds that are not earmarked. And so, my, my concern is, in the middle of a budget, an adopted budget, we, we allocate, unallocated general fund reserve we're proposing without having the discussion of other priorities, and I, and I've, and I'll, and I can think of a few, but that I won't go into right now. And that concerns me. I guess if this was for a one-year basis that was then reevaluated in the budget, and its strategic plan in the budget, that would be better than any long-term, because I don't, because I worry about long-term commitments of general fund revenue that could be used for other purposes that are not being used. And so, if it's, if, if my understanding is that this is a one-year process, and we could use it as a way of evaluating its success and seeing if, if the goals that are stated are, then, you know, I, I guess I would, I would, I would be willing to support that. But, but it's under those caveats. I think we have to discuss where we spend our money, and how we spend our money, and it doesn't meet the priorities that people in the community want to have. We have to have that discussion soon, sooner than later. But thank you, mayor, for that time.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Hey, Mayor, Councilmember Jenkins, thanks for the comments, and it is a one, it proposes a one-year. And I just want to recap a little bit what Ms. Wackenhut-Lomelli expressed is, you know, historically, the, the City of South Lake Tahoe had supported, we have a lot of nonprofits in our town. There's a lot. I, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I think sometimes too many. I think they're competing for the same valuable resources, and, but the two that we're talking about here are integral in the interaction with our police department. And when the city created the annual grants revenue program through cannabis monies, it corralled the ask and request that council receives for distribution through a competitive grant program in a way that was manageable. We made sure that that was known when we talked about this during the homelessness report. I wanted to make sure that the council knew that the relationship that these two nonprofits have with the police department. And I think the comment that I heard from Mr. Messina, that, that metrics that are provided in the scope are incentivizing more, it's actually capturing the work that's already being done, and that, and it motivates them to ensure that this coordination with our police department gets people out of the dangerous situations with support services in a quicker manner. So I just want to highlight that. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Counsel? Mr. Robbins?
No questions.
Uh, we're in discussion. Do you have any discussion?
Sorry. Uh, no, I'm, I'm prepared to vote when you are.
Okay, I will just make a comment. I'm 100% in support of the money for Live Violence Free. We do have an item coming back about a warm room, I believe, on March 11th, and I will just, is it March 11th, Mr. Irvin?
Yeah, so as Ms. Wackenhut-Lomelli expressed, when the council talked about this item a few months back, the request was also to evaluate what money, resources, partnerships would be needed to support a warm room in South Lake Tahoe. And so that item is planned to come back on March 11th for a discussion with the council.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Irvin. So, I have, while acknowledging that the current executive director was not the executive director during the timeframe that I'm going to refer to, there, there was a grant coming from the State of California in the $10 million range, and they were to do with that money, purchase, rehab, and operate for two years, the three facilities that they had, and those replaced what we current, what we had at that point, which was a warm room, which I will, I will fight to the death that that is still needed in our community. And we know as the council that they came to us six months after that and couldn't pay their bills. So they didn't rehab, at least the bears didn't end. They purchased, but they certainly didn't operate for two years. So the money was mismanaged, we'll just say. And again, acknowledging that the current executive director was not the executive director at the time that that occurred under. When I, when I supported this coming back as a Pay for Success, it was always with the idea that a warm room from the homeless coalition would be included in this. And so, while I 100% agree with the money for Live Violence Free, I am unwilling at this time to support any money to the homeless coalition unless they are willing and able to provide a warm room. And so that's where I stand. Mr. Roberts, you have?
Thank you, Mayor Wallace. I pretty much agree with that, in that I think TCH has done, had great success in the past in growth, and, you know, accommodating a lot. I wasn't there through that growth, as you were, so I don't know quite as much of the details. But I think the warming shelter is, is equally as important. You know, it's not a single-dimensional problem that we have, and we need to be attacking it from all, all directions as possible so to get the best results. I would like to see this item pushed back to the March 11th, at least.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Bass?
I guess my, I just maybe a question. So could we go ahead and approve the Live Violence Free $40,000, and then push this one off to the presentation with the warm room?
The way I read it, we can, and I would defer to our city manager.
Yes, we certainly can do that, Mayor Pro Tem Bass.
Great.
So, based on that, if there's, Mr. Robbins, do you have anything? I'm going to try and go to you every time.
Yeah, sorry. Standby. I, I would like to see us make both sets of funding now, but it doesn't seem like there's the support for that. So my, my preference would be to approve the funding as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I would ex-
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I would accept a motion. And I would like us, if possible, and I would be happy to make the motion, but I would like us to separate them.
Sure. You want to make the motion, or do you want me to? I can, either way.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bass.
Sure, I will put forward a motion authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a Pay for Success agreement with Live Violence Free in an amount not to exceed $40,000 until December 31st of 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the Live Violence Free?
Just that we'll direct for the Tahoe Coalition, or, excuse me, I'll wait for the vote, and then we can direct.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I got confused by that.
Okay, we can vote. Ms. Blankenship, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
Mayor Wallace?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
And Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
That motion unanimously carries.
Okay.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
There was a second part of that, talking about appropriating funds.
I saw that.
So I want to make sure that that motion, that's okay, we can do another call.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so I just can put forward a motion to pass a resolution authorizing $40,000 of budget appropriations from general fund, undesignated excess reserves for the one agreement approved in the first motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Blankenship, will you please do a roll call vote?
We're on a roll.
Okay, Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bass?
Aye.
Mayor Wallace?
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
So, Ms. City Attorney, do we need a motion on the other? Or can we just give direction, if that's the will of the majority of council, to push the warm room idea to the next meeting, to March 11th?
Cut two, more than two.
I think that direction's clear without motion.
Okay.
Yeah, we have clear direction. When we look at the, setting the agenda for March 11th, we'll look at the placement of these items so that discussion can be had, signed up together would be ideal, or one after the other. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that's, we're going to take a very short break. We'll do 10 minutes, we'll come back at 5:27.
Good morning, Mayor. Sir?
It works better when you throw it on the right.
Okay, we'll come back to order and move on to item number 12. Update on the annual road rehab program and drainage replacement. This will be Stephen Anderjack and Brianna Greenlaw.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor and the City Council. My name is Stephen Anderjack and this is Brianna Greenlaw. We are both staff members in the city's Public Works Department. Our presentation is aimed to inform the council and the public about our annual road rehabilitation project and our proposed annual drainage replacement project. Today's presentation will cover general information about the state of our infrastructure, our infrastructure maintenance plan, the correlation between drainage issues and pavement issues, and our road rehab and drainage projects for 2025 and beyond. Currently, our city owns 257 lane miles of roadway. Of this total, the city has rehabilitated 22 lane miles and fully reconstructed eight lane miles in the last six years. In the upcoming construction season, we are proposing to fully reconstruct over six lane miles with our three CIP projects detailed later in the presentation. Shown here is a PCI map of the city's roadway network. PCI, or pavement condition index, is a rating of the condition of a road segment from zero to 100, with zero being the worst and 100 being the best. We collect PCI data every five years, with the most recent collection in 2022. The average network PCI was 57 at this time. On this map, one can see the neighborhoods that are overdue for a paving project. We try to prioritize our paving projects in neighborhoods with many streets in the poor and failed categories. You can also see how our 2023 and 2024 road rehab projects restored the PCIs in the Heavenly and Tahoe Valley neighborhoods. Tahoe's unique alpine climate is extremely harsh on our infrastructure, especially our pavements. One large problem that stems from our alpine climate is the freeze-thaw cycle. When water seeps into cracks in the pavement, it freezes, expands, and breaks the pavement apart, causing larger cracks and potholes. Another problem we have from our alpine environment is that we receive very large snowstorms on an annual basis. These large snowstorms require extensive use of snowplows and graders. These heavy machines scrape and gouge the pavement surface, leaving the pavement exposed to additional water penetration. The heavy use of vehicular chains in the winter also wears away the pavement surface prematurely. These alpine climate issues are unavoidable living in a mountain environment. However, there are additional factors of accelerated deterioration that can be addressed by the city. A major issue that our pavement faces is the lack of adequate drainage in many areas of the city. As shown in the picture above, many areas of our city flood on an annual basis, completely saturating the surface and subsurface of the pavement. When pavement is completely submerged like this, the subgrade loses its bearing capacity, which allows for more pavement deflection and cracking. The total saturation also forces more moisture into the pavement itself, when this moisture then freezes and expands, breaking the pavement apart. This severely affects the life of the pavement and is a major concern that should be addressed. Brianna will cover this topic in further detail in a later portion of this presentation. Another major infrastructure issue our roadway network faces is the lack of an aggregate base. The aggregate base, or pavement base, is a typical feature of roadway design and construction that creates a load-bearing surface for the asphalt to sit on. This additional pavement layer provides support for the flexible asphalt pavement and reduces rutting, deflection, and therefore cracking and potholing. The vast majority of the roads in the city were not built on an aggregate base when they were originally constructed. This is a large factor to why our pavement may not last as long as it is designed to. This year's paving projects all include the addition of a pavement base layer in order to ensure we obtain the best return on investment with our pavements. Our department has been pursuing innovative ways in order to stretch the funding that we have so we can perform more effective pavement maintenance techniques on our roadways. With the help of a third-party consultant, the Public Works Department has developed a pavement maintenance toolbox, shown as the pyramid here, in order to maintain and improve our roadway network. For the high-PCI roadways, we can utilize crack and slurry seals to prevent moisture intrusion and reduce freeze-thaw damage. This is shown as the top of the pyramid. The majority of the crack sealing we perform is done in-house by our street maintenance crews. For medium-PCI roadways, we can perform crack repairs, digouts, micro-surfacing, cape seals, or rubberized asphalt surfacing. The repair method chosen depends on the cause of pavement failure and can be different for each roadway segment location. Our department would like to implement an annual sealing project in future seasons in order to extend the life of our existing pavement segments that may not need a full rehabilitation. For low-PCI roadways that have experienced failure, the solution is either a mill-in overlay or a full-depth reconstruction. A mill-in overlay removes the existing asphalt and replaces it in kind, whereas a full-depth reconstruction removes the existing asphalt and subgrade and replaces it with an aggregate base layer and asphalt pavement on top. This is our preferred method of rehab for this year's road rehab project because the streets we are proposing to pave on this project do not currently have an aggregate base layer. For context, it is not economical to keep performing drywall repairs at your house when the root of the problem is a foundation issue. The same thing goes for our roads. If the issue facing the road is the lack of a pavement base, the required rehabilitation would be the addition of a pavement base. One question our department is asked often is, "How do you pick which streets are paved each year?" We use five main factors in our evaluation. We look at the PCIs of our road network and try to find groupings of roads with low PCIs. These roads need to have large groupings because the cost of a contractor moving their paving equipment from one area to another can be about $30,000. We then look to see if there are any planned city, utility, or private projects in the area in order to avoid our new roads from being cut and trenched. We also evaluate the ADT, or average daily traffic, of the potential roadways. For example, we would prioritize paving Pioneer Trail over a dead-end residential road because it is used more frequently by all members of our community. We also try to make sure that we do not focus paving in one area in particular and try to distribute the paving throughout our city equitably. Our funding sources for these projects are State SB 1, RMRA, which contributes about a half million dollars annually. This is also known as the gas tax. The city's Measure S funding also contributes between $2.5 and $3 million per year to our paving projects. Utility in lieu fee reimbursements also supplement our yearly paving budget. This year, Southwest Gas and SDPUD have contributed a combined $1.3 million. We are estimating to have about $5.3 million of total paving this year. This $5.3 million is split between three projects. The project with the largest amount of paving is our annual road rehab project, which is proposed in the walk-up neighborhood for 2025. Our paving budget for this year's annual road rehab is about $3.1 million, and the proposed roads and their limits are shown on this slide. The actual roads paved on this project may only be a portion of this list, depending on the pricing that we receive from contractors. This is an overview of the proposed roads for the 2025 road rehab. This neighborhood was selected because it has some of the lowest PCIs in the city. There are currently no streets in the neighborhood with an aggregate base, and we have been informed by residents that there has not been any paving in the majority of these streets in the last 50 years. SDPUD has also just finished their water line and sewer line replacement project in the area. They have restored their utility trenches per our standards and have agreed to pay an in lieu reimbursement for the pavement overlays they were required to complete. Southwest Gas, Liberty, AT&amp;T, and Charter also do not have any projects planned in this area. Another large CIP project which involves paving is the Tahoe Valley Greenbelt and Stormwater Improvement Project Phase 1. This project has about $1.1 million of paving work that will be completed this year. This project was under construction in 2023 and 2024. The project will resume construction in May and is scheduled to be completed this summer. The streets that will be repaved on this project are shown on this slide. The paving on this project will restore the streets in which storm drain infrastructure was installed. Shown here is the map of the Tahoe Valley paving limits. The Pioneer Trail Pedestrian Improvement Project Phase 2 also has about $1.1 million of paving work this year. This project involves pedestrian upgrades along Pioneer Trail corridor between Larch Avenue and Ski Run Boulevard and will include paving Pioneer Trail within the project limits. This project is currently out to bid and will be constructed this summer. This is a map of that project's paving limits. Now let's look forward to the proposed 2026 road rehab project locations. We are proposing to focus the project in the James and Eloise neighborhood as it has low PCIs across the board and should have all planned utility work completed by the end of the 2025 construction season. Johnson Boulevard is also a high-priority road that we have been evaluating. However, there are three potential projects planned on that street in the near future, so it may not be worth a large paving investment at this time. Staff is proposing to obtain an engineered analysis of a temporary treatment for this street. This treatment should prolong the life of the pavement, enabling it to last until the future projects are completed and full-depth reconstruction can be implemented. Heavenly Village Way, Palmyra Avenue, Rufus Allen Boulevard, and Lisa Maloff Way are also high-priority roads that our department would like to pave in the near future. In addition to the paving mentioned above, our department would also like to implement an annual sealing program to help maintain our mid-PCI streets and extend the life of existing pavements before they deteriorate to the point where reconstruction would be required. If the City Council has additional priority roads to evaluate, our department would be open to suggestions as well. In addition to our paving contracts, we have also started paving our streets in-house with our Lee Boye 7000C paver. Last year, our streets department paved a portion of Craig Avenue, as shown in the pictures. They are a great supplement to our annual paving project and can pave isolated streets not grouped with our other paving projects. I will now hand the presentation off to Brianna Greenlaw to discuss the status of our stormwater infrastructure.
Good evening, I'm Brianna Greenlaw, as Stephen mentioned, and I'll be your guide through a separate but major aspect of roadways, which is drainage. As shown by our Venn diagram, there are three overarching facets to the city's drainage that are all equally important. One, drainage and flood relief. Two, infrastructure maintenance. And three, water quality. At times, these are independent drainage issues, but sometimes they overlap and can be incorporated into one project as indicated by the circle overlap. Historically, many of the drainage and water quality improvements installed within the city have been funded through grants from federal and state sources focused on protecting the clarity of Lake Tahoe. Larger projects that meet all of these goals and are eligible for grant funding take many years to plan, design, and construct. As staff works to plan for drainage, flood relief, and water quality projects, there are many areas throughout the city with existing degrading infrastructure nearing or at the end of its useful life. Today, we'll be focusing on two of the aspects of our Venn diagram outlined in black. One, drainage and flood relief. And two, infrastructure maintenance, as we correlate drainage with road rehab. First, we'll highlight our drainage and flood relief component. Of the total mileage of city roads, it is estimated that roughly 57% are lacking adequate drainage systems. On this map, the orange indicates roads that have underground pipes with adequate systems, and the blue indicates roads lacking adequate drainage systems. In this context, lacking adequate drainage systems means there is not sufficient drainage infrastructure to prevent ponding on the roadways. Recall Stephen's discussion regarding what happens when water penetrates the subgrade of the roadway and the freeze-thaw process occurs. In order to implement drainage in these lacking areas, it is estimated that it would cost over $160 million based on previous capital improvement projects that include drainage solutions that provide flood relief. The city has a drainage master plan that includes projects to mitigate drainage inadequacies in some of these areas. While staff is aware of the extent of the flooding throughout the city, it takes many years to obtain grants that are the right fit to fund the design and construction of these projects. As staff works on larger capital improvement projects that solve flooding, drainage issues, help the city meet the rising Tahoe total maximum daily load thresholds for Lake Clarity, and improve water quality, continuous road rehab of all city streets and replacement of degrading infrastructure must occur. New pavement is highly desired and much needed, but it's important that the significant correlation between drainage and pavement longevity is not forgotten as we continue our annual road rehab program. As Stephen discussed, a substantial road is built from the bottom up. Without drainage infrastructure and a strong base, the pavement does not have a sound foundation to provide the greatest longevity. Here are two great examples of areas identified on our map as lacking drainage infrastructure. The top pictures show frequent winter-spring flooding conditions. There is a lack of drainage infrastructure in these areas, and as you can see, the pavement has failed. These photos here show the same intersection before and after the Sierra Boulevard Complete Streets project. Before, highlighted in blue, the inadequate drainage was corrected by the project shown in the photo highlighted in orange. Since the Sierra Boulevard Complete Streets project was only recently completed in 2020, we haven't had enough years to see the true effect of the drainage system leading to a greater longevity of pavement. However, you can see the benefit of a multifaceted CIP project here. Now, as we move on to our second Venn diagram circle, infrastructure maintenance, recall the first map I showed you again that depicted areas of our city that have drainage systems and those that don't, or drainage systems that are not adequate. Just because an area was shown in orange indicated it had underground drainage infrastructure and was left out of that large $160 million price tag for drainage improvements, it does not mean that funds for existing infrastructure replacement are not needed. The photos depicted here are both from areas with existing underground pipes on our map but have experienced failure in recent years. Pipe failures and roadway collapses can create safety issues, unexpected access issues for businesses and public, and the potential to damage public and private property. In 2022, a citywide storm drainage system-focused condition assessment report was completed that has helped to inform and move the city towards a data-driven approach to managing this existing infrastructure within a risk-based framework. This map highlights the estimated age of existing corrugated metal pipes, also known as CMP, because the report found that CMP was of the highest risk for failure in the city. CMP was commonly used in the 1960s to 80s because it was cheap, available, and easy to install. The report suggested CMP could have anywhere between a 56- to 70-year useful life, depending on site conditions. Not every culvert will age the same, depending on a variety of factors such as soil, saturation, and vehicle loading. In fact, other studies have found that CMP is likely to have closer to a 40-year useful life. As you can see on the map, a large portion of the pipes are shown in red, ranging in age between 49 to 60 years, which is nearing or beyond the estimated useful life of CMP. You may also notice that many of the pipes shown in yellow or red are in stream environment zone, which is that aqua-shaded color, or in the Tahoe Keys. These are the often saturated conditions and areas that would cause pipes to fail sooner than an average lifespan would indicate. The main point here is that we have a lot of existing infrastructure that is at or nearing the end of its useful life. Factoring in both the probability and consequence of pipe failure, the assessment report found the need to replace approximately 91 high-risk pipes over a five-year timeframe for a total cost of $2.64 million. Factoring in soft costs such as surveying and design, costs would be closer to $610,000 per year for five years, or about $506,000 per year for six years, to address time-sensitive replacements. While these were found to be the most critical for replacement in the near term of five years, a plan for longer-term replacement such as over 20 years should be considered for the pipes identified as medium and low risk in the report. It's important to remember that this is a dynamic system that was studied and reported on to provide a snapshot in time. These estimates include construction costs only and don't account for annual inflation. As we implement projects based on guidance from this report, staff will work to implement cost-effective and innovative ideas to try to replace more for less. It is also usually most cost-effective to implement projects in one area at a time rather than hopping around due to mobilization costs. Stephen previously indicated this in terms of road rehab. This may mean replacing some pipes identified as medium risk at the same time as replacing high-risk pipes in the same area. While this would stretch out the number of years to complete those high-risk replacements, overall, it would be more cost-effective for the city. To remain accountable and effective, staff will track and update the condition assessment. As staff progresses on completing pipe replacements over the next several years, we will return to council to provide an update and recommendations for funding needs moving forward. To wrap up our discussion on drainage, we'll now tie back into the 2025 road rehab project previously discussed by Stephen. The 2025 drainage replacement project is proposed in the Bijou area, primarily bounded by Herbert Avenue and Walkup Road, the same area where the road rehab project is proposed. The design will largely consist of culvert replacement at proper elevations and re-establishing ditches. The pipes in this area that could likely fail before the useful end of the pavement will be replaced to avoid undue expenses and trench cuts in the new asphalt. In addition to expending the remainder of funds in the drainage pipe replacement account for the 2025 project, staff recommends that council consider supplementing the project with an additional $100,000 during the upcoming mid-year budget. Additionally, the Aloha Basin, one of the projects that is part of the CIP Upper Bijou Park Creek Watershed Restoration Project, proposes to abandon an existing storm drain and install two new storm drains across Herbert Avenue. As it would be best practice to construct this project prior to new paving, staff recommends that council consider funding it in the upcoming mid-year budget. You'll also see that the James Eloise Drainage Maintenance Project is included in the table on this slide. This is a drainage replacement project that previously received approximately $200,000 in funding to focus on replacing a failing CMP that spans from Emerald Bay Road to the Eloise Detention Basin. Due to the acquisition challenges and urgent need to replace a portion of the failing pipe, the project was split into two phases. The first phase has been completed by installing new pipe from Emerald Bay Road to James Avenue. The second phase is planned for this coming summer and consists of replacing the pipe from James Avenue to the Eloise Basin. In order to construct the project this summer, staff recommends that council funds the estimated budget shortfall of $250,000 during the upcoming mid-year budget. Looking forward to the summer of 2026 and beyond, staff proposes the need for two annual drainage replacement projects. As previously discussed, the assessment report estimated the need for $528,000 annually, which was construction costs only, for five years to replace high-risk pipes. Factoring in soft costs and stretching it out over six years, staff recommends allocating $500,000 annually to the drainage pipe replacement account to replace the identified high-risk pipes. Depending on several factors such as deterioration, where the pipes are located, such as in landscaping or roadways, and if the city needs to obtain easements, will dictate the size of the pipe replacement project and ultimately how many years it will take to replace all high-risk pipes. Staff recommends focusing in the Tahoe Keys for a 2026 high-risk drainage replacement project. Additionally, many existing culverts in the road rehab areas are nearing the end of their useful life and are installed with inadequate cover. To ensure recently paved roads are not cut into to complete drainage replacements or compromised when culverts fail, the city must be proactive with these infrastructure replacements as well. It is estimated that completing necessary culvert replacements and associated replacements prior to the road rehabilitation project areas each year will cost approximately $500,000 annually, depending on the location and the size of the area. Staff recommends allocating an additional $500,000 for a second drainage replacement project each year, with this one to focus on replacing infrastructure in the same area as the upcoming road rehabilitation project. As funds are made available, staff will plan, design, and implement annual replacement projects. In addition to implementing projects as feasible with available funding, updating the condition assessment and tracking progress as previously indicated will help us continue to plan around a dynamic system and determine how we can stretch out the annual costs and mitigate highest risk first. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderjack and Ms. Greenlaw. Counsel, do you have any questions for them? Mr. Bass?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Thank you. Yeah, it's just so great every time to see how much progress we've made in this area since we've been on council. It's awesome. So you guys are doing a great job. I'm curious with Larch Avenue to US 50 on Pioneer, in that whole section, basically, if we were to go Ski Run all the way to Pioneer, sorry, Ski Run to 50 on Pioneer, why are we not doing that? Is there future projects planned from Larch to 50?
The scope of the project from Larch to, or from Ski Run to Larch, is the second phase of the Pioneer Trail Improvement Project that included sidewalks and lighting as well as street pavement. So that's where it's, it's a second phase that's been engineered and bid out as that.
Okay. And then will there be...
I just want to supplement that we have received federal grants for that project from Ski Run to Larch, and then the next phase hopefully will be extension of that. So this is the second phase, and we will do that hopefully in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins?
First of all, thank you very much for an excellent report, really hitting the major issues that go into street maintenance and street reconstructions. Excellent report. My question is this, I have two questions. One, does the program that you're proposing provide, contain funding for manpower and materials for the Public Works Department to maintain the entire city street system, chuckle repair, crack seal, slurry seal on an annual basis? That's the first question. Now, you want me to do them both, and then you can...
We can answer one at a time.
Okay. The second, shouldn't existing open spaces owned by the United States Forest Service and the CTC that are within the city limits be used as drainage retention basins and possible recreation opportunities to improve drainage using existing lands rather than what I have described as maybe unfairly, but as digging a hole and throwing some gravel in it and calling that drainage? Is that...
Yeah, I can take the first part. So the street maintenance department is funded separately than the CIP projects, so it's a totally separate funding. We are looking to implement a sealing program next year which would help maintain our mid-PCI roadway segments. However, we're in the preliminary stages of that right now.
And then in regards to your second question about utilizing CTC and Forest Service other public lands, this is a common practice that the city has done with CIP projects. The Tahoe Valley Stormwater Project that's currently in construction and will be continuing with the next phase, as well as the Upper Bijou Park Creek Project, both have many CTC properties, and the Upper Bijou Park Creek has Forest Service properties. We do often utilize these properties and the partnership between these agencies to find ways to have infiltration basins and create area-wide drainage when possible so that instead of having parcel BMPs, those private parcels have an opportunity to potentially utilize that area-wide treatment. There are license agreements that need to be made, special use permits when it's in terms of Forest Service, those have to be obtained by the city. And then using federal lands, of course, requires different kind of environmental compliance, so that requires NEPA documents to be completed rather than just the California CEQA documents. So there is an additional level of effort that's needed during the project planning and design when utilizing those, but it is a frequent and common practice for the city to use those.
Mayor, so you're getting the kinds of cooperation that you need from the Forest Service and CTC to do this, because they have a huge amount of land, as you know, in the city limits.
Yes. They have been great partners to work with on these projects.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, just a simple question. I'm just wondering if we approve this presentation as it is, that won't prevent us from, if we happen to find some extra money in the soon budget meeting, if we'll be able to put it here, that won't prevent us from adding to it?
No. No.
Thing I would caution, you probably can add on, is designing road projects requires preliminary engineering, environmental review document preparation, preparing of the RFP. And so that's a capacity issue, but I think if there's anything else you'd like to?
So the map of the Herbert Walkup area, if we have additional funding, we could award more of those roads because we have designed for them, but outside of those areas, we don't have the time right now in this season to implement the engineering design for the roadways.
Could I follow up on his question? Is the engineering design being done internally or is it being done by contract?
We have a consultant.
Consultant?
So for the engineering design, we do ask consultants to do pavement coring for us so that they can give us recommendation about the pavement section. We do the preparation of the design in-house, so it's a combination of outside consultants and in-house staff.
Is that all your questions, Mr. Roberts? Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on something that was mentioned in terms of the CTC parcels and the Forest Service parcels. Well, there's a lot of them. My understanding, and I guess the question is, is my understanding correct? Is that, I mean, not all of those parcels are useful for retention if they're not at the right location in grade and at the bottom of hills and where the drain, where the water needs to flow down. So I just, you know, is it, is it always the case that there's a CTC parcel that can be used or is that something that's done on a basis of the geographic location and grading in the area?
Yes, your understanding is correct. Many of the CTC parcels do involve areas where infiltration basins are a possibility, but it needs to be determined on a project-by-project basis if the piping and the grades and there's infiltration capacity with the soils and all of those factors that you mentioned. It is a project-by-project basis to see what's available.
Okay. I've spoken with staff about the, on a number of occasions, about the new drainage basin, for example, that was put in adjacent to Barton Avenue, across the street from the mobile home community that's there. One of the questions was, is that an opportunity for doing things like native plant restoration to help with the filtration? And is that something that's done as part of these projects as a, as a normal part of operations or is that done on a specialty basis? Is that something that's to be done individually?
Are you asking in terms of vegetating the basins to have the plants provide greater water quality benefit?
Correct. And just as habitat and other, you know, beneficial environmental purposes.
Yes, that's, that's usually looked at within the project design that's included as part of the CEQA or NEPA environmental documents. Revegetation is required and all of the native plant species and different vegetation for what the basin's uses are going to be are assessed at that point.
Okay. And last item, another thing I've talked to with staff about that particular parcel is part of the parcel is the drainage area and the other, the other half of that particular parcel is just level graded ground. And that seems relatively consistent with a number of these drainage basin projects. And I think there might be an opportunity there for looking at the development of what are called parklets, little micro parks that can be made in the non-basin aspects of some of these drainage catchments where, you know, there's a drainage area in one part and a flat ground in the other to make that into a little micro park for the community. And I think that's something we should, I guess this is a question for the rest of council really, is this something we can bring back, that strategic plan next month, which that meeting just keeps getting longer and longer. But to make that a part of the, these projects where we put, we put in these projects and we consider, I think it would be worth thinking about how we consider the full cycle, the full lifecycle of the, of these types of projects where we aren't just looking at putting in a drainage basin, but looking at the full use of that land for the community's benefit. So that goes beyond just the drainage aspects. If we can put in, you know, some park benches and some chairs and one of those, I guess we can't do barbecue grills really, but, you know, a footpath, that kind of thing. And then make that something that is more valuable to the community than just a drainage facility.
Sure, yeah. I think that's a discussion that we would likely need to have in further detail with CTC. Most of these drainage projects operate under license agreements where it specifically spells out what, what the project is for and it includes those drainage components. But I, I think that community benefit is important and to be able to utilize these in parcels and areas in multiple ways. So I think that's a conversation we can have with Conservancy and of course with the strategic plan as well.
Well, let me just follow up on that then real quickly. What is your read on whether or not that would be feasible given the, you're right, these are, these are not our parcels, so they're used under agreements, you know? Would that be something that we can include in future agreements from the get-go? Is that plausible? And obviously we should probably think about the parcels we already have and amending those agreements to allow for parklets, but, but in terms of projects going forward, is that something we could think about including at the beginning?
Mr. Robbins, I can probably answer that because I'm the vice chair of the Conservancy and they do have a policy of making all of their lands available to users for recreation. So I'm, I'm almost certain that the Conservancy would be willing to have that conversation with the city in these instances and in maybe other instances, so.
Excellent. Then I guess the, the glances are most.
Sorry, I want to add that we have already approached them for the Barton and Second. And we're going to continue to do that and making sure that we can make this happen. And certainly we can include that in the future discussions.
Perfect. And let's maybe ask staff to bring that back as part of the strategic plan in terms of integrating those considerations into future, into current and future drainage projects so that that becomes sort of part of the planning process.
Great idea, Mr. Robbins. Any other questions, Counsel?
I just have one other question. I think it may be for Mr., going along with what Mr. Roberts said about having additional funds available and having the need on the larger projects to have them engineered on, if we were to come up with additional funding for like slurry seal and things like that, that is possible though within our current staffing?
Yes, with the staffing that we have, we have the capacity to undertake those additional treatments. We want to make sure that we bid out the annual roadway rehab, make sure that is done. And then obviously if we have additional funds, we can look in, in terms of what options, what roadways. And certainly one of the key factors for us to be able to get good bids is to issue the bids early in, during this period right now. The later we issue the bids, usually the, the contract prices go up because everybody's busy. So we want to make sure that we bid out the base bid and then potentially we can bid out the rest of it if we have additional funds. And then make sure that we can get good bids and if we do get good bids, then we can award those.
Thank you, Mr. Najad. Thank you both so much. Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Lowberg?
Scott Lowberg, it's incredible that they continue to redline and discriminate against my neighborhood. And I live between Trout Creek and the Truckee River and there's no drainage. I would think that would be a high priority to put your ton drainage in there first, number one, and put in drainage where there isn't any rather than take up drainage that is already existing and fix it. You think you'd go ahead and put it where it needs to be to begin with. That's absent. The other thing is everybody here runs on fixing the roads. And as soon as they get here, they come up with some other project like, I got to have a world-class bus system. Ridiculous. You know, it's just obscene. And it's just incredible the waste that you just choose not to spend the money on the roads and it goes elsewhere. If they go at the rate that they're going on, the roads that they're doing today, they'll be fixing in 10 years. They will never get to my roads. It's ridiculous. The utilities, the water company, they're putting in pipes everywhere, but they're not putting them in my neighborhood. They're charging me though. They're not putting them in my neighborhood. Here, I've got something for you. Earlier communication from August of last year, that my, my neighborhood was going to be put on the list. I don't see my neighborhood on that list, just like the water company. We get the bill, we don't get the service. Not this current storm, but the previous storm, it wasn't that big of a storm, but the contractor was out plowing the commercial property, six, six o'clock in the morning. And I looked out there, I didn't see any plows coming. The road, people had driven on the road. I thought, well, maybe they didn't put the plows out that day. But then I went driving around town and road after road after road and these neighborhoods were plowed and not my neighborhood. It's just a redheaded stepchild. It's being ignored. Highland Woods is just kept off the back and it needs to stop. Money needs to be allocated. You need to dip into the general fund and, and the savings and start spending some of that to take care of these problems. I mean, they're this deep and there's, they talk about fixing after utility comes through. There's a utility cut out about the size of that desk. They just did a little patch and they didn't do overlay over that. And there are other ones that go clear across the road. And then on Essex, they're deep fissures. There are fissures in the road. I had to replace my front end from that road and I'm just driving on it slowly, just a couple of blocks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowberg.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. First thing is I'd like to address the paddle signs. You're talking about drains and where you have them and so few exist. I mentioned a few years ago that the paddle signs in my neighborhood and down like along Pine Boulevard where you have the ponds right there, Pine and Park, you know, they're this high, they're right, sitting right on the ground. So if you get eight, nine inches of snow, plow comes by, the signs are buried and the drains are buried. You know, if you put them six, seven, eight feet up in the air, on the post is right there for a sign that it's attached to, just move them up so that at least the plow drivers know where they, where they are. And then they can use their gait or go close to, close to the curb at the edge of the road and clear the drains. And water comes down there and floods and that's a, it's a curve, not necessarily a corner. People fly around there 30, 35, 40 miles an hour and it's, it's dangerous and when it freezes over, it's really dangerous. So you have ponds, you have drains, but they don't work and don't function. So like I said, paddle signs, put them up in the air where, where the plow guys can see them and clear the area. Also, places like Park Avenue there, where you got money from Southwest Gas, and I mentioned previously, instead of pocketing the money and using it elsewhere, use it where you get the money for. You know, they, they had to pay for not paying where they did the work on Park Avenue there, right below Highway 50, almost like almost down to Cedar or down to Cedar. So use that money because that's in really bad shape. From, from the corner to Cedar at least should be, should be totally repaved and the corner of Park there by the motel across the street should be, should be straightened out. It's a very dangerous situation and in worse shape than a lot of the places that you're repaving. And also the criteria that you use, use also for what, you know, tourist and local use. There's areas that, you know, the high tourist area and light tourist area, tourist core area, places that are high-traffic areas and roads there should be, you know, should be a higher priority than, you know, the first one you did was Devon Middlebrook's area when he was on council that, you know, almost nobody uses. So also look at the structure in North Shore's TBID, Tourist Business Improvement District, and how that's structured, you know, and they do infrastructure use and get our Lodging Association to agree to sharing, you know, at least as I've said previously, at least a million a year for infrastructure improvements and use that in the tourist core area, you know, so their Park Avenue state line and that whole area and side streets and everything can be repaired and infrastructure can be done because otherwise you're 10, 20 years down the road from doing that. And it's high-use area and it's where your big bucks come from. So, and also the CTC parcels, you mentioned, Mr. Jenkins, they're like right behind Whole Foods, there are CTC parcels. So that is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Please come forward.
Dan May for the record. I just wanted, I wanted to comment that everyone seems to agree this is very important work. And I wanted to highlight a couple of things that I got from the report. The first thing is simply that we're doing more work now than we ever have and we're still not keeping up with the work. And the second thing is a lot of that improved work that we're doing is because of Measure S. And I just want to make this as a reminder that sometimes we need to get more revenue. Sometimes there's no amount of general fund, there's no amount of moving of money around, there's no amount of efficiency. Sometimes it just takes more to be on top of the expenses that we have. And it seems to me that the more that we defer these costs, the more expensive they become down the line. So I just want everyone to take consideration to sometimes we need to pull more money in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to comment on this item? Go to our Zoom platform?
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment. We have Mr. Spiel.
Hello. My name is Nick Spiel, calling on behalf of the Lake Tahoe Bicycle Coalition. Last year, we left a comment at this meeting and I was grateful for the city council for giving direction to include main bicycle routes as priority streets for road repair. These are often low, low-traffic streets for cars, but very busy arteries for bikes. I know these things take years to schedule, but I would like to please again request that several critical bike routes be scheduled for road rehabilitation. First, Eloise Avenue from Dunlap to 15th, also Dunlap Drive between Highway 50 and Eloise, and finally Palmyra Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. No additional public comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Flankship. Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Mr. Jenkins?
One, I appreciated very much hearing from members of the community who express their support for improved, further improvements in, in road maintenance, drainage, drainage issues and Mr. Spiel's bicycle. I think it's really important. Some of us did run on the issue that roads are very important and need to be maintained. And we need, but, but it takes three votes to allocate the appropriate funds to do that and that's what part of the strategic plan conversation is going to be about, I hope. And also it's part of the budgetary process. And so I encourage those of you with, with ideas as you have, is to, is to engage us in that way so that there might be opportunity for the others to, to find, to, to do, as I call it, some zero basing and take a look at what revenue we have, keeping, keeping police and fire harmless, but looking at where we're spending our money and is it in the, in the way that's the highest priority. And so I, I thank you for being here and hope that other people will stay engaged in this budgetary process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Roberts? Mr. Bass? Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, we had the, we had a sort of top-line numbers for drainage there. I'm wondering if staff can provide a gross estimate of the top-line numbers for bringing all roads and drainage up to good condition? Not necessarily perfect or ideal, but at least good or better, fair or better, I think is the, is fair, I think, is the measure. If that were, if, if that were something that there was an infinite money glitch, how much would it cost to do that in a year or two?
We do have an estimate of the cost in $2024, which is about $150 million for the roadways and about $160 million for the drainage improvements. Obviously, you know, the longer we do these, you know, there is an inflationary cost addition. So it's about $300 million.
It's about a third of a billion dollars in order to, to fix the road. It's about a third of a billion dollars in order to, to fix the roads in quotations as, as, you know, I think the public generally understands it. And it seems to me the problem we have is that there isn't $300 million lying around, and that we, we just don't have that much money to do everything right away. And so, as to the questions about why certain neighborhoods are being done before others, it's because we cannot do them all at the same time. There isn't the money. There isn't the money in general funds, so there isn't the money anywhere that the city has access to, to do that much work that quickly. And I think, I think the public would benefit from a better understanding of the difference between the resources available and the scale of the actual problem, because I think there's a, a very strong and ongoing perception that, you know, the, the costs of fixing all the roads are something that's well within the existing budget, and it's, it's simply not, not in any short period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Mr. Bass?
Sure, yeah. I was just, again, Mr. Najad, I cannot tell you how much, it's just great to see the, the progress in public works over the years, and with this pavement rehab, it's, it's great to see. So, with that, I will put forward a motion approving the 2025 Road Rehabilitation Program and Drainage Replacement Plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll please do a roll call vote. Ms. Blankenship?
Yeah, Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
That motion unanimously carries.
Thank you. I agree that we have done a lot. We've done so much more in the last six years than the previous 30, but we do need to do more. We just, we just have to keep doing as much as we can.
Wallace, if I may, I just want to...
Yes, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass mentioned it, Mr. Najad's leadership of public works is awesome, but our two staff members, Brianna and Stephen, who presented, are very passionate about what they do, and it shows. And when I go meet with them, I get excited, because as a city manager, it's exciting to talk about those core services, and they are working on that. And to Mr. Jenkins' point, we will definitely have opportunity to talk about road rehab and priorities and budgeting priorities at the strategic planning session. Thank you.
I would also like to thank the two of you, Mr. Antijack, Ms. Greenlaw. I think that that was one of the most in-depth and comprehensive and straightforward presentations that I've seen in the last six years, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Mayor, may I say ditto?
Yes.
Ditto.
Okay. Moving on to our final item of the evening, our agenda planning calendar. Mr. Irvin?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll just start with the kind of a, an apology, kind of, for our last meeting being canceled. It's the first time in my 20-year career where I really witnessed a cancellation of a council meeting not due to weather or an emergency or some kind of circumstance. It was really just when we looked at what the APC had on the agenda, two items were ready, queued up to come on February 11th that were easily able to push to today. So, I appreciate the council recognizing that, and it was a strange moment. I don't anticipate we'll ever have that again.
Please don't apologize for efficiency. Do not apologize for efficiency.
Well, so there's that. Our next meeting is March 11th. A couple items to highlight on there is our Chateau RSG report, otherwise known as the redevelopment area phase three. Some people call it the hole in the ground. Just a status report as to what our consultant has identified. Another one I want to highlight for council and the public is make sure when that agenda's published, the general plan annual progress report, that's an important report. When I got to town, I asked our public works, our, our police, fire, and public works departments to start doing annual reports. This is really the annual report for development services, so that's, that's neat. As mentioned earlier, we'll have a future funding on the long-term warm room, as well as our mid-year budget review. And then, the strategic planning session is March 18th, 9:00 AM start, and there may be a closed session before that, just to, I'll apologize for that, but that's where we're at. That's all I have on the APC.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Okay, we'll move on to updates and announcements. Ms. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. None at this time.
Thank you. Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, I received a proclamation request fro, from the Humane Society of Truckee and Tahoe, recognizing October as Pet Wellness Awareness Month. Okay, so I'll put that on the APC for October. It's a new one.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Always in favor of that kind of stuff. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, the only item is to mention that the South Tahoe Transit JPA will be meeting this Friday morning.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council member reports and comments, we'll start with Mr. Roberts.
Nothing to add at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Robbins?
Nothing to add. Thanks for hosting on Zoom.
I kept you guys straight tonight.
Mr. Jenkins?
I was very pleased, I was very, I was very pleased to have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Vasquez, the CTC Executive Director. I found him to be delightful, open-minded, with things in it, but open-minded to suggestions and comments, and their willingness to explore some issues with us in regard to retaining the commodities for Motel 6 to be reinvested solely in the city as commodities that will be, we'll be losing as it's torn down, and, and to discuss their future plans for acquisitions and those impact on our general plan. Oh, excuse me, our, our revenue base. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Bass?
Nothing for me, TRPA tomorrow, and that's about it.
You have a big meeting tomorrow at TRPA. Yeah, good luck with that. I have nothing either, so the meeting is adjourned.
Excellent, Madam Mayor.